To the Special Education 2020 Board of Education Candidate Forum. I'd like to welcome our two candidates from District One this evening and welcome our viewing audience. But first, before we begin, I do want to thank our sponsors. This evening's sponsors are CAC, which is the Howard County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, and we are also cosponsored by the Howard County Autism Society, or HCS. Can everybody see my screen? So, the CAC is a mission-driven organization, and under the law, it advises the school system on the needs of students with disability. They also collaborate with the community and other disability advocacy groups to really improve special education and the lives of our students here in Howard County, Maryland. The Howard County Autism Society is a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization, which is committed to improving the lives and serving individuals and their families with autism spectrum disorder. I would like to welcome our two candidates for District One. Our incumbent candidate is Ms. Christina Delmonte Small, and our opposing candidate is Mr. Matthew Moliet. The first hour will be dedicated to the two District One candidates. I am Dr. Heidi Abdul-Hady, and I am going to be your moderator for this evening. We've all agreed to call each other by our first names, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And I really want to thank both of you for being willing to serve, serve our community. One of the things I want to stress to you and to the viewing audience is that special education really goes to the schoolhouse, and it really determines the trajectory of the student's life based on what interventions they get early on. So your decisions not only impact the student, it impacts the family and really determines their future. So with that in mind, I do want to review a few ground rules, and then we will go ahead and begin with the first question. Couple of ground rules for our viewing audience. Please engage with us. Enter questions into the chat box. I have two people helping who will collect themes. Please keep yourself muted, because we would like to listen to our candidates and be able to hear them clearly. Please keep in mind that we want questions that serve really everybody in our community and not to be specific to your child or situation. Candidates, couple of ground rules for you. Each of you will have two minutes to answer a question. You may have the same question, you may have a different question. I will alternate between the two of you. At the 90-second mark, I will hold up this red paddle so that you know you have about 30 seconds to conclude with your comments. We will not have opening statements, but we will have a two-minute closing statement. So, welcome to our forum, and I will take the screen off. All right, let's begin with a question that really affects all of us as people. We are living in an unprecedented time right now with the pandemic, and a lot of people want to know, what are we going to do about virtual school and getting back into the school building? So the first question, and I will start with Christina, is accessibility of the curriculum during virtual learning is extremely challenging for many in the special education community, especially those younger or with more significant needs or in supports, who are at significant risk at falling further behind their peers. What is your plan or vision for bringing students back into the classroom?
So first of all, we want to make, everybody, I think we could say, wants their students back in the classroom. The question is, how do we do that safely? And I have been particularly concerned about students with disabilities, because as you said, they have unique situations, and virtual is not necessarily going to work for them. There are some parents I've spoken with who are finding that virtual works, but unfortunately or ironically, it's because they're able to sit with their child and provide the supports that the child would have normally received if the IEP would have been followed. So what we need to do is get these students back. If they are medically able, and it's something that their family and their parents think would be best for the students, we need to get them back to have face-to-face actual instruction. And I want to be specific, because I'm speaking about instruction. I'm not speaking about sending your child to school with a laptop and having to do virtual learning at the school with a para educator helping them. We have to figure out how to do this. The board had been told by staff that they were going to use ESY as a way to determine how we would work when we got back to the fall. I have not been happy, and I have not seen enough progress as far as how we are going to give options to our parents of students with disabilities so that they can get their students so that they stop falling behind.
Thank you. Mr. Moliet, this is such an important question. Matthew, can you please share your vision?
Thank you. Unfortunately, for our last few years, we have addressed our budgetary concerns through class size increases, which necessarily end up blocking our whole student body out of their spaces. We can't look at pushing everybody back into the school in any sort of quick manner because of the spacing concerns and the necessary logistics. So I find it extremely important that we look at prioritizing based on providing the necessary interventions and staffing and appropriate education that we can through the spacing and the staffing that we have available to us as we can get more people back into the classroom. And we need to do so as fast as we can, provide it safely, and with all of the necessary supports.
So what does that look like? Because right now, the proposal is to have students come back and sit in a building with a para educator, not with a highly qualified teacher for direct instruction. So how do you marry safety and equity in education for the most vulnerable who are falling further and further behind?
We need to pair the appropriate assistance with the students in need of those interventions and supports, rather than just somebody in the room to allow them to do their virtual learning, by bringing in the right trained staff that matches up with the students out of our staffing that we have, ideally with the same talent and folks that had already been experienced with them in the past.
Thank you. Christina, what does inclusive education look like to you? And what do you believe HCPSS does well in this area? And where can improvements be made?
Inclusive to me is that we allow students with disabilities to be in the least restrictive environment, that we allow them to be with their peers so that they can have the education with their peers and also have the other characteristics that go along with that, learning how to get along, and being able to have the proper education. The school system has been known to be very good with the inclusive model, with putting our students together. Where we're falling short right now is coming from a staffing perspective. We are not staffing at the level that we need for our students with disabilities. So when they're in our classes, they are not having as robust of an experience as they should. And also, if there are behavior and issues because their needs aren't being met, because perhaps we have a student assistant or we have a temporary employee with them, we're falling short in how we need to make sure that we provide the proper type of environment. And again, the other issue is, which is a very big issue, is that federal law requires that we provide students an appropriate education, and we're not doing that. And when you look at how our funding is, the answer is always like, well, more money, more money. That's not necessarily the answer all the time. We have to look at the funds that we're spending, and are we doing accountability? And we're not doing it from accountability perspective. So we're not doing that check and balance to make sure that what we're doing is truly working for our students.
Thank you. Matthew, to piggyback on that, since we are talking about staffing, the question for you is, between fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 18, HCPSS had an additional 1,006 special education students, yet only added two and a half, two and a half additional special education teachers. How do you think this has impacted the delivery of special education services for these students? And how could you improve them, given limited funds?
Well, we haven't only had problems with failing to keep up with the growth. We've additionally had staffing concerns related to replacing the staffing that we did have with less trained and less credentialed and less qualified helpers. This means that we're doing a disservice to our students in need from both the ratio and the quality of assistance. So we're impacting on both sides. One thing that we need to do, "we" is not just the board, but even in all of us, is we need to address and talk to our delegation as they're going back into session in the coming months to get them to override and push forward the blueprint for Maryland's future, because there was significant funding in there for increased pre-K and increased special K services, which would help us increase our staffing to better provide those needs once the state is providing the funding and the funding formulas that they've already determined that we are in need of.
I want to share a slide with both of you as it relates to... Can you see the slides? So this is a slide that goes from fiscal year 17 through 20. We don't have enough on 21. And you could see the yellow is the number of additional special education teachers over the prior year. And you notice that's quite a small bar as you go along. The green bar is the number of additional K through 12 special education students who have enrolled over the prior year. And to your point, Matthew, regarding the less qualified folks in the room with students, we have special education temporary employees who earn an hourly pay, no benefits, have no training. And we also have special education aides, student aides, not para educators. I will go back to Christina, and if you can speak to the slide, please, and share with us, with funding as it is, how would you... ...so that it reflects the ability to provide a free and appropriate public education, FAP, to students who receive special education?
I think what this chart is showing us is that we don't have the correct balance with what we are providing to our students as far as the adult who's with them. There's a difference between doing what the, making sure we do what is right and what the law says. To me, when we look at FAP, it's not the ceiling. To me, that's the, it's the ground. That's where we start. We have to always go and say, what is best for our students? And sometimes federal law isn't enough. And I think in Howard County, it's not enough. We have to look at how we are allocating resources. And the resources, the problem is, like, for example, the temporary employees, we pay almost a million dollars in administrative fees in order to have these temporary employees. Just think if we had that funding and we could bring it into the school system, and we could instead have special educators hired and utilize them. The other thing that we have is, we have a lot of educators who are dual-certified with special education, but for some reason, they're not teaching special education. I know of educators who want to be doing, do special education, but for some reason, the school system is not allowing them to do the voluntary transfers to be able to be with those students. So to me, that is especially discouraging, that when we have educators who want to be with our students with disabilities, and then we can't even have them do that job. So funding is always going to be a problem, but you also have, as I said earlier, the accountability side. We have to make sure what we're doing is working, and we do not have a way of measuring whether or not what we do is improving student outcomes, and we need to fix that.
I'm going to ask both of you the same question. So according to Emma, and it's in relationship to the current discussion, according to MSDE, Howard County has a significantly higher number of special education aides compared to special education teachers. Surrounding counties have significantly higher number of teachers compared to aides. And a common concern we hear from parents is that their children are placed with untrained aides rather than being provided a quality education. So I go back to the budget, and the reason why I go back to the budget is because our surrounding counties have the same budgetary constraints that we have, and yet they don't seem to have the same staffing problem. And this is a slide here that shows you where we are in Howard County, with blue being teachers and orange being students. And that relationship is reversed in every other county in the state that has the same budgetary constraints. What do, both of you, please, what do you think is the primary driver of this?
Before the pandemic had stopped the ability to campaign, I had a chance, or to have conversations with the community directly. I had a chance to speak with a teacher educator that lived just a ways outside of Dunlogon. And when I spoke with her, she mentioned that she was an educator, but not within Howard County. So I found that worth questioning further, being that she lived within walking distance of two of our buildings. And she said that she tried taking a teaching position with Howard County schools, and our human resource and hiring process was too slow, too broken, that we were unable to provide her a position in the time that she needed to make her decision and staffing, and as such, has to drive to another county to teach rather than being here in Howard County where she'd like. As you're discussing and showing this staffing issue, it brought me back to that, that if our hiring process and our administration of bringing in talent is having trouble communicating and keeping up with the teaching staff that we need to have, that's where we should look. We need to look at, are we failing to identify and bring in the teachers that we need and fix that? Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to next move to topics of accountability. All of the children who receive special education have either an IEP, an individualized educational program, or they have a 504. And compliance, we know, is much different than quality and fidelity. And so in that spirit, we'll start with Christina. The compliance metrics used by the Department of Special Education reads like a guide for a good IEP, that many parents believe IEPs are not being followed. How would you change the way the school system measures compliance?
I think what I would ask us to do would be to take the IEP and have special educators who do not work on that IEP to do an evaluation of the IEP and to look for best practices and see what is working and what is not working. Because I think we get in a rut as far as how we like to do things in the county. And I've spoken with parents who have IEPs that are, I don't know, 50 pages, 60 pages. That's, it just doesn't make sense. We have to create, we have to utilize the document in a way that is going to get the students what they need in order to succeed. We tend to have this philosophy within the school system of, we have the IEP, the IEP provides the supports, the student does better because the student has the supports. So then we take the IEP away, saying, well, they don't need it. Look what they've accomplished. And then everyone is shocked, of course, except the parents, as to then why the student isn't succeeding. We need to look at the IEP as to what it is supposed to do. It's supposed to help the students. And our measure of success shouldn't be the number of IEPs we have or we don't have in the school system. It should be how our students are progressing and how they are learning, and if they're getting the education, not only that's legally required, but the education that every parent would want for their children. So we have to evaluate, look at what other counties are doing, but we have to be honest with ourselves in that evaluation, and also make sure that we work with our parents in a much more cooperative manner.
Thank you. So in that spirit, part of implementing an IEP with fidelity and part of knowing how a child is progressing or regressing is to maintain data. So Matthew, you have a background in, I know it's more cybersecurity, but certainly in the leveraging of technology to advance any process. So how would you, as a Board of Education member, leverage technology to ensure that data is being collected and being evaluated, in turn, evidence is being used to address
Thank you. That's a fantastic question. And ensuring that the data that we are collecting, that our para educators and our special educators are recording and documenting, we need to ensure that those are being digitized and centralized so that they can be easily observed and tracked from central office and via scripts and algorithms, things that we can graph and dashboard, rather than having binders or papers that people need to review individually. The more you have to track or view the data, had to spread out across time of reading and switching and delaying, the easier it is to allow the differences in what you're seeing or processing to go away. So as long as we, for us to ensure that it's easily monitorable and trackable, we need to make sure that we can access as much of it at the same time, and which allows us to then also provide standardization and normalization over...
Evidence in that manner with regards to standardization? How do you implement evidence-based interventions? How would you demand that as a Board of Education member?
I would require that, or, well, I would go to my special education teams and leads across the building and find out what are our most effective practices in each location, and how are each one of them tracking and recording the evidence that they're encountering to then, across our district, find out from our own teams, what are those evidence tracking that function the best, and then roll that out across... Thank you.
Christina, in that spirit, in terms of inconsistencies that we know happen, one concern is that we have continued to speak of what is seemingly inconsistent practices and programming and staff supports across our 74 school buildings, with some stronger in some areas and some even without programming that ought to be in that building in other areas. How do you, as someone who is an incumbent, how do you ensure that schools across the county have high-quality and sufficiently-trained staff to meet the needs of the students in an equitable manner so that student in school A gets the same opportunities that student in school B?
Well, it goes back to accountability. We kind of let everyone goes and everyone's out. We don't, we don't monitor as well as we can be monitoring. We really have to make sure that we provide training and then the accountability piece of it. Because when I speak with staff and I speak with parents, I hear, well, they know that the staff knows they should do X, or they know they should do Y. And, well, okay, they may know it, but knowing it and doing it is two different things. Because if you do the training, you have to make sure you do good training, but then you also have to make sure that you're coming behind that training and making sure that we actually are implementing the training. Because we don't do that. On the accountability side, we don't do it at all. And we also, the problem that we do is that we are very insular. We only look within, we don't look without. We should be looking for best practices outside of the Howard County Public School System. We should be looking to non-publics. We should be looking to where students are thriving and what that looks like. And we have to be willing to think differently and to think outside the box. And for some reason, we just don't do a good job with that. We need to make sure that we have the funding and the programs that are going to benefit our students, and we have to do a better job of being able to match those. Because things shouldn't be a mystery as far as what supports a student can have at a certain school. We should have a way and have a repository for our special educators to have somewhere where they can go so that they can look at best practices and see what works and what doesn't.
Thank you. I'm going to shift a little bit and go to individual questions that are unique to each of you. Matthew, I'll start with you. The Board of Education election is supposed to be nonpartisan. Over the last several weeks, Board of Education candidates have aligned themselves with certain parties against Howard County Board of Education policy and election regulations. Disabilities do not discriminate by race, gender, age, or political party affiliation. How can you assure our community that you will understand and advocate for adherence to special education regulations independent of party affiliation?
Thank you. And that's a fair question. There is an underlying question there addressing that, how I've messaged, and I'll tell you that that's because what I did when I began running here is I reached out to other folks that had been around Board of Education campaigns in the past. is I reached out to other folks that had been around Board of Education campaigns in the past. I wanted to see what works. How does this messaging go? What do voters want to know? And everybody that had done the door-to-door campaigning and discussing Board of Education had, had the same question come up at the door in real time. When talking to the voters, it was, what is their party? And in this time of pandemic campaigning, we can't go door-to-door. We can't talk to people in real time. So it's important for us to know what are the questions that people want to know? And we answer them. The only way to do that in this environment is to know the questions and provide the answers directly and ahead of time.
Does education differ across party lines?
Values differ. And voters use party affiliation and the values that they espouse directly. So voters wanted to know. So we answered.
Do you share your values?
My values are to look out for everybody, to provide equitable solutions. And be aware of issues that where the status quo is failing groups and communities and being allowed to fall through the cracks. Within our own school data, we know that there are students that fall through the gaps. We have a 25% graduation rate for our English language learners. And a 25% graduation rate is not acceptable. That is a spot that we need to be able to focus on.
I just, as moderator, I do, I must just correct one thing. It's actually 43%. It's not 25%. I just don't want the viewing audience to leave this session with a different number than what we know it is.
You're right. That was one of the places where it's an intersection.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm blanking right now on my spreadsheet. But that gets us back to what's important, that we need to break down and look at the intersections of our groups to see who are we failing and fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, individual question for you as well. We have seen you fighting for special education for the last four years. But your public requests have fallen on deaf ears. How will you collaborate with the next board if elected to be able to implement the changes you believe are necessary for special education? How would you change your approach in collaboration with peers to be able to advance progress?
I have to say, that is probably one of the most frustrating things that I have taken from being on the board. Is the fact that when I advocate for special education, I am met with such resistance. When I recently asked for disability awareness to be included with training, I thought this was, this was simple. This was easy for a school system. We talk about equity all the time. Yet I got resistance from other board members. It just, it just blows my mind. So I am collaborative and part of the way that I try to do things is I want, I want to make sure that the board members receive information from the school system in a timely manner so that they can do their own research and they can be prepared. Because that also isn't happening. We have to be able to have the information and also being able to listen to the community. I will continue to try to collaborate, but collaboration is a two-way street. And just because I have people who do not believe that special education is a priority for them who are on the board, that isn't going to stop me from continuing to advocate for students with disabilities. Because I'm not the type of board member where, well, if I'm going to lose the vote, I'm going to vote no anyway. No, if my vote is yes, it's going to be yes. If my vote is no, it's going to be no. Because I think it's very important to also set the example as an elected official of what I believe is right. And most importantly, what I believe is best for the education of students in Howard County.
Thank you. I'm going to shift topics now to reading. We all know that if a student cannot read, their opportunities in life to be independent and to earn a living wage are greatly diminished. We also know that this is the best way to have a school-to-prison pipeline. So we have recently in Maryland had the Maryland Readiness to Read Act passed in 2017. So this question is predicated in that background. Reading specialists are screening students for reading difficulties once in kindergarten. Best practices suggests that multiple times and multiple brains is better. However, students with reading service hours in their IEPs will not receive those services while specialists, reading specialists, are screening kindergartners. How would you work to require HCPSS to follow best practices and ensure that they are being compliant with the IEP with regard to reading intervention? Mr., I'm sorry, Matthew?
Thank you. To address the confusion from the last question, that the 28% graduation rate I had in mind was for Hispanic English language learner students. Thank you for clarifying that, the problem there. We need more people. And we need to advocate the importance of the increased screening to our funding bodies to explain that we need more people. We need folks that can focus on the screening to be able to continue it. And that would allow them to also provide additional supplementary supports throughout the year to our students in need. While also being able to dedicate more screening time and more screening opportunities. It's something that we need to demand as a priority and then successfully defend to our funders.
One thing, just as an apology to you, is I just got data. And your number is correct, 26% for 2017. And then in 2018, it was 43%. And in 2019, it was 47% in terms of the ELO graduation rate. So I guess we were both half-right. It depended on the year. So my apologies for that. But I do want the viewing audience to know that the numbers are such. All right, we are coming to the end of our time together. And so I would like to give each of you two minutes to make your final statement to the community. Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. Chris, the same question to you, Christina.
I think that's, this is one of those examples where we have to look at other jurisdictions and to see how they have tackled this. If you look at Baltimore County, they trained so many more educators to be able to do the screening, as has Montgomery County. Montgomery County, it's like hundreds, and we are nowhere near that number. So I think it goes back to, to me, speaking obviously as an individual board member, is that I do not feel as though we are taking this seriously enough as far as reading and finding out whether or not students have what they need. And if they're struggling, give them supports that are actually going to work. When I got on the board, I helped a parent advocate. And this parent had a child in high school who was reading at very, very low level. Now, how this child kept getting promoted without the ability to read is a different issue. But the solution of the school system and why the parent contacted me was the school system was paying for outside tutoring and they weren't going to be paying for the outside tutoring anymore. Yet the student was nowhere near the level of reading of where that student should have been being in high school. So I think we are fighting a culture within the school system. And I don't understand why, as to why our inability to teach reading, in addition to our inability to be able to detect how to better apply reading, continues to get in our way. And I think we really need to do a much better job.
Thank you. We are coming to the end of our time together. Each of you has two minutes to make closing statements to our community. Matthew, we will start with you.
Thank you, Dr. Heidi. And thank you, CAC, for this opportunity to speak to you. Thank you, Ms. Carr, and thank you, Ms. Hall. I am Matthew Molyatt from District One. And I'm here as a candidate because I care. Our Board of Education has just made a large step forward for our school system by creating and putting in place Policy 1080, Educational Equity. We have problems which are reflected in the data just released by OCR, which get even worse when we look at the intersection of race and disabilities. These problems are present in both opportunity and in discipline. I care about defending the rights and education of all of our students. The utter devastation of over 220,000 of our countrymen loom heavy over this forum as the pandemic has so shaped our current schooling, as we discussed. I care about the difficulties parents face. I am a working from home father of three HCPSS students, including a new kindergartner. Back in July, back before the pandemic claimed an additional 80,000 American lives, our Board of Education had to decide how today's schooling would occur. One member, a candidate speaking today, had sided with the National Administration against our educators. I care about and would have prioritized the health and safety of our educators and our students. Early voting begins next week. Be sure to vote and go all the way to the bottom of your ballot. I am Matthew Molyatt, and I'm asking for your support and your vote in District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Christina, two minutes for your closing statement, please.
Before I became a board member, I became a parent of CEAC. I became a member of CAC because I had a student who was on a 504. And so I began to see challenges. And I began to see that parents were, parents were not getting the relationship with the school system that they needed in order to get the education for their child. So when I became a board member, I wanted to make sure that all of our students, which includes students with disabilities, would get the education that not only was required by law, but also that they needed in order to succeed. So as a board member, I have not only worked with parents individually to help them advocate for their students. I established a board liaison position for parents who have students in non-publics. I have made it so that we have CAC at the table and be able to come before the board in order to make reports to the Board of Education and for the community to hear of the work that you do and of the needs of our students with disabilities. I continue to look towards accountability and trying to get the school system to make sure that we put checks and balances and that we're able to measure what we're doing. So then we can manage and do better for all of our students. I've asked that CAC be part of the discussion now that we're looking towards about COVID-19 and getting our students back in the classroom. I can say that I'm very disappointed that the board's majority does not seem to be comfortable or for whatever reason, doesn't want the voice of CAC to be there. So that if the board has questions, we can ask you to understand how do we best do this for our students who are most vulnerable. So I'm Christina Delmont Small. I'm running for reelection in District One. And I would like to have the opportunity to continue to fight, not only for all students, but for students with disabilities, so that Howard County can once again be known as a great school system for students who have disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you both so very much for joining us tonight and sharing your thoughts on special education. This forum can truly run, you know, as a day-long seminar, just with the two of you to discuss the multitude of issues that our children and our families face. So again, thank you so much for your graciousness. Thank you for sharing and best of luck to both of you. Good night. I see Ms. Mallow, I see Ms. Palmer.